Years, the carbon dioxide concentration in the atmosphere was always fluctuating between one hundred and eighty parts per million to two hundred and eighty parts per million. So as you can see here, it's always one eighty or two eighty. And even till the industrialization started in, you know, in our modern civilization, which was around eighteen fifty. It was still two hundred and eighty parts per million. And then in the last hundred years. It spiked from two hundred and eighty parts per million directly to four hundred and fifteen parts per million. That's if you see the time scale and this is where you know even Homo sapiens as a species emerged. This was, you know, couple hundred, two hundred thousand years ago. And all the while, the carbon dioxide concentration, the atmosphere stayed at two hundred and eighty ppm. That was the maximum it was ever was. And then suddenly industrial efficiency started, we started burning fossil fuels. There was more carbon dioxide that was released into the atmosphere and in just hundred years it went from two hundred and eighty ppm. To four hundred and fifteen ppm and that's a quite lot of spike. Right? But what do these sovereign greenhouse gases do? So what, so what if carbon dioxide in the atmosphere has reached four hundred and fifteen ppm? So what they primarily do is they trap heat. If any of you have ever been to any of the greenhouse, greenhouses, basically those plastic, you know. Shelters which is really warm inside which you can grow plants and stuff. If you've ever been in any one of those greenhouses, you, you can see how the plastic traps the heat inside, right? The heat, the radiation does not go out, so it's really warm inside. And that's exactly what the greenhouse gases do. They form a layer on top of our atmosphere. It's predominantly carbon dioxide now. And they don't let the solar radiation that comes in escape. Which means they're trapped on between the atmospheric layer of the greenhouse gases and the earth surface. And that's what happens with the heat, so the heat is just there and this earth surface just keeps on getting heated because the heat cannot escape the greenhouse gas layer. This wouldn't have been a problem if. We had a carbon cycle that was able to take all of this extra carbon dioxide. But once we started putting all of this extra carbon dioxide in the atmosphere, the natural carbon cycle of our planet was upset. So normally we have a natural carbon cycle, where you know, all, all, all organic items are made of carbon. So we die or you know, we have all of this plants and. We have, we have oceans, so all of the, the carbon keeps on recycling between, you know, the terrestrial system. So even when the, you know, when in the process of respiration, when we emit carbon dioxide, when we die and you know that. Then again, there is this carbon dioxide, when all of this is released in the atmosphere, it's also taken back through forests and oceans and being captured in the soil. So there is never extra carbon dioxide, which is why for the past hundreds of thousands of years. There was never extra carbon dioxide in the atmosphere, it was always between one eighty to two eighty ppm. But once we started burning extra carbon fossil fuels, there was way too much extra carbon dioxide in the atmosphere, which, which is not being absorbed by the natural carbon cycle anymore. So the oceans can't take so much of carbon dioxide without upsetting the balance and we don't have enough forests to take back all of that carbon dioxide. So we have a lot of extra emissions and this extra emissions are just like, you know, staying like a plastic cover on top of the atmosphere and they are causing a lot of heat. So here, if you see how the temperature has responded with the increase in carbon dioxide. This was the last ice age, which was about twenty thousand years ago. And you know, the temperature, once the ice age ended and that the world started warming. It, in the whole scene, it became, you know, it warm and we had like a stable temperature, a nice stable temperature. For like many years. And then once, in the last hundred years, once we started burning fossil fuels and you know, the carbon dioxide concentration in the atmosphere started spiking. In. A point in hundred years. So till about eighteen hundreds before the, you know, industrial, industrial revolution started. The temperature was, you know, around, this is the average temperature rise, right? So it was, it was normal, we didn't have any extra warming, but in the last hundred years, once we started burning fossil fuels and putting all of this extra carbon dioxide in the atmosphere. We saw a spike of one point two degrees in just hundred years. If you can look back at this entire graph, for the world to warm by three degrees, it took like twenty thousand years. Without any external human intervention, right? Because we were not doing anything at that point. It took twenty thousand, almost twenty thousand years for the world to warm from minus three to zero degrees. Right? This was by natural processes. This is, this always happens, so there is a natural process happening. But we started making the atmosphere kind of like, you know, unstable by putting all of this extra carbon dioxide. And once we started doing that in just hundred years, we caused the entire earth surface to warm by one point two degrees. So you can see how drastic the change is. And this is the projection for, you know, the next couple of decades. So we're already here at one point two degrees. And probably we will see one point five degrees by twenty thirty seven. And it will increase all the way to two degrees by twenty sixties. So this is not a lot of time, we're already in twenty twenty, in the next forty years, we'll already see two degree rise in temperature and that is quite scary. So where is all of this heat going and what is it doing to us? So this trapped heat, it has to go somewhere, right? It can't just stay in the atmosphere like that, something has to happen with all of that energy. So right now, all of that energy is being absorbed by the land and ocean. Fortunately or unfortunately, ocean so far has taken up ninety percent of the extra warming. Which means in just the land so far has seen only ten percent of heating. And within that ten percent, we already have such. Oh, you know, crazy impacts in terms of heat waves and melting glaciers and droughts. So this is happening with just ten percent of extra heat and we have a lot more heating coming up in future. Right? So here, if you see. This is a temperature change in the last fifty years. And you can see except for the, some one small patch in Antarctica and one small patch near Greenland, there's no area which has not warmed in the last fifty years. And some areas have warmed as high as like two degrees already. So what this also shows is the unevenness in heating, even though we can say that the world has warmed by one point two degrees since the pre-industrial times. You can see India has not warmed that much, but you can see the Arctic has warmed by a lot, which is why currently we are seeing, you know. Unprecedented levels of melting in the Arctic region and we are also seeing wildfires in the Arctic region. So what this figure shows is there's a lot of unevenness in the heating, so even though one point two seems like a small number. It can actually mask a lot of variations between different regions. For instance, if you see Africa is also heating by a lot compared to India. And the Arctic is heating a lot, Europe is heating a lot, there are like some Asia, parts of US that's heating a lot. Some parts of Australia are already heating up a lot, so if you see all these places are already reporting very high temperatures. Last year, Middle East had such hot temperatures that. Even air conditioning was not working anymore and the doorknobs were so hot that people were getting burn marks on their hands when they went to open the doorknobs. And these are just like some days, but when you take average over fifty years, you know, all over the world, then all these things just like kind of become flat. But you should always remember that even though the numbers seem small. Within that, there's a lot of variation. So one day we can also see that kind of, for now, we're not seeing major heating in India, but we never know how things will change in the next couple of years because the heating is continuing. And if you just see last year, what happened, twenty twenty was declared as the hottest year so far. Again, if you see. This is compared to how you take these measurements, you try to take an average, try to estimate what is the average temperature for a couple of years. So here we are taking the temperature average for each place between nineteen fifty and nineteen eighty. So let's say the estimated temperature in India, in Bangalore is thirty degrees in summer. Right? So for the next thirty years, they will see what temperature it was recorded during that, you know, in summer in Bangalore. And then they'll take an average of that and compare to that average, they'll see what Bangalore is recording now in summer in twenty twenty. And then this graph is what is the anomaly. So let's say in nine, between nineteen fifty and nineteen eighty, the average temperature in summer in Bangalore was, let's say, twenty five degrees. But in twenty twenty, the temperature recorded in summer is, let's say, thirty degrees. In that case, the anomaly is five, the temperature anomaly, right? So that's what you see here. You know, so if the higher the temperature anomaly, the more red the, you know. Illustration is and if it's cooler, then it goes to blue. But again, like you can see in twenty twenty, there was literally no part of the world that was. Really cool, it was like a little bit of cooling in the oceans, but no part of the world, the land at least, was cooler in twenty twenty. And you can see how red the Arctic is. So the Arctic was seven degrees warmer than usual in twenty twenty. So which is why we are seeing unprecedented levels of ice melt and wildfires in the Arctic. And India, if you see, it was not very warm, we only had about point four degrees. Where is India? India only warmed by point four degrees in twenty twenty. But if you see the ocean around India warmed by a lot, which is why last year, if you remember, we were battered by floods continuously. So when the ocean warms, what happens is all of that water, a lot of water is evaporated and all of that moisture in the atmosphere causes more rainfall. And also all of this warming changes the patterns in the ocean, which causes more cyclones. So which is why if you see, even though India escaped the, you know, really hot days in twenty twenty. We did have flooding events all through the year and we had cyclones, we even had a super cyclone, what was that? That battered Bengal.
I'm fun.
Right, I'm fun, so we even had a super cyclone and we had a couple of other cyclones, which were Nisargha and another cyclone that formed. So even though we don't have heat, we had flooding and cyclones. So this is going to be our future. It's going to be either extreme heat or extreme flooding and it's not just for us, it's for all over the world, these are the two major issues. Again, to see how the world, the variation in temperature rises, this is how each country fared in twenty twenty. Here you can see, you know, the areas in the Arctic and closer to the Arctic, Russia, Belarus, Sweden. And Latvia, they all experienced temperatures in excess of three degrees. If you see India, where is India, I forget again, India was just point four degrees, Nepal was just point three degrees. But you can see, so it's not uniform all across, so when we say a temperature rise of one point two degrees or one point five degrees or two degrees or three degrees or four degrees. It masks a lot of variation, so we cannot think it's a small number. Because if you see the temperature rise in twenty twenty, it was estimated. That we were about one point two degrees higher than pre-industrial time. That was the global average, but Russia warmed by three point six degrees and Nepal only warmed by point three degrees. So even though the number is just one point two seven, it masks a great amount of variation, so we have to be very, you know. When we say by twenty one hundred, if we are going to see three degree rise in temperature or four degree rise in temperature, the number may seem small. But it's going to be like this, where some countries will face much higher impacts than the others. Okay, what are the impacts of global warming and climate change then? So what if the world warms, how does it really impact us? So this is the most important question that everyone needs to, you know, probably understand because for the longest time, it just felt like, oh, some glacier is melting in some faraway places. Some polar bears are not able to survive anymore, but really does it affect us? And honestly speaking, I don't think it really affected us as much before, like in the past, if you go back three, four years ago. I don't think we were getting impacted so badly as we are seeing in the last few years. Twenty nineteen, it was quite bad, twenty twenty was extremely bad and this is just the beginning. I think it's only now that we are seeing how global warming and climate change will impact us. But before we go into that, let me briefly explain the difference between global warming and climate change. So global warming is just the temperature rise, one point two degrees, one point two, one point five degrees or two degrees or whatever. So that is just how much the temperature is rising. But the temperature, once the temperature rises, it also causes a lot of changes in the climate system. Right? It also changes how the rainfall patterns are happening, the season, how the seasons are changing, changing and how. Cyclones are forming and what's happening with the sea level and what's happening with glacial melt. So global warming refers to just the temperature rise, but climate change refers to what the warming is doing to the climate system of the earth. And having a stable climate is very important for us, like the humans thrive when we have a stable climate. We can't have a lot of uncertainty in terms of, is it going to be too hot, is it going to be too flooding? If it's too, too much rainfall, we need our, all our systems are designed to have, to thrive in a stable climate system. What happens if we can't grow our crops accordingly? Because all our cropping patterns are based on some kind of stability, right? We know that if we plant the crops now, then we will get some rainfall in the monsoon and then the rice will grow. What happens if the rainfall does not come when it is expected or what if there are droughts when there's supposed to be rainfall? Right? So all these droughts and flooding and rainfall were there to an extent before, but now climate change is making all of these things worse. Right? So the first thing, first impact that all of us will witness is extreme heat and drought, like you saw in the previous graph. Entire world is burning up, so extreme heat is going to be part of our future. This means we'll have really hot temperatures, summers will be unbearable and there'll be more heat waves which will cause more wildfires. And this will also cause more drought and. How will this impact our crop production? How will this impact human productivity? Because a lot of people do work in the outdoors, right? And we can't work productively in excess of like forty degree temperatures. But we'll see a lot more of that in future, which means we'll have to prepare for extreme heat and drought. And the second thing is extreme rainfall and flooding. As the ocean warms, because like I said, ocean has taken up about ninety percent of the extra heat now. This is good for us because only ten percent heating was absorbed by the land, which is already causing so many problems for us. Imagine if fifty percent of the heating was absorbed by the land, if only ten percent is doing this much damage. So it is, in a way, it is good for us that ocean is able to buffer some of the effects of global warming and, you know, just take all of that extra heat. But when ocean takes all of this extra heat, it also causes a lot more evaporation, which means there's a lot more moisture in the atmosphere. And what this means is we have intense precipitation in short amounts of time and we have supercharged cyclones. And both these things cause urban flooding, like we saw in the last year. Because we were getting a lot of rainfall in a very short amount of time. When we have monsoon season, monsoon is very critical for all tropical countries. We live entirely dependent on monsoons, right? All our cropping patterns and the forests and everything, they all thrive during monsoons and that's when things get a new start, a new life, they recharge. So it's very important that we have a stable monsoon where things are not very uncertain and we need a lot of, you know. Regular rainfall so that the rainfall is also absorbed into the ground and the groundwater recharge, aquifers are recharged. So we take a lot of our water from the groundwater aquifers, right? And it has to recharge, but if a lot of rainfall just falls at once, there's not enough time for it to seep into the ground. There's not enough time for it to, you know, recharge all of these underground systems. But unfortunately, that's what we're going to see in future, we'll see a lot more intense precipitation in short amounts of time. And also all the ocean heat will also supercharge the cyclones, which is why we are also seeing a lot of destructive cyclones. Or typhoons or hurricanes or whatever you want to call it, all across the world, everywhere from America to China to Japan to India, all the coastal regions. Africa had this intense cyclone season last year. So all, all the coastal regions will face more cyclones. And because our cities are not primarily built for this kind of flooding, we'll also see a lot of urban flooding. And the third one is ice melt and sea level rise. So ice has been melting at unprecedented levels. Before sea level rise was just mainly due to thermal expansion, which is the ocean water was just expanding in response to the heat. But now we're in such a situation that there's so much of ice melt that. The sea level is also rising because of all of this water. That was stored as ice on land or in glaciers or in ice sheets, they're also melting quite fast. Which means they're contributing a lot more to sea level rise now. Before it was just, you know, expansion of water in the oceans, but now ice melt is contributing a large percentage to the sea level rise. And what this means is we'll have more coastal area inundation, so even without any flooding, a lot of areas like Bangladesh, for example. Areas, cities there and, you know, people living on the coast there. They'll see the sea level has risen and it's encroaching into their habitat, but we used to live around oceans all the time, but now that is. We are forced to move backwards and backwards and backwards away from the sea. So that is going to intensify in future. And the another thing is water cycle changes in the mountains. So in high mountain Asia, which is all of this Himalayas and, you know, Andes are not, so all of these mountain areas where you have. Water stored in ice. Ice there, the glaciers there are very important to provide water supply throughout the season, throughout the year for all the communities downstream. So in the summer, when we have, during the monsoons, we'll have normal rainfall and everything, so there is enough water, but during the summers. The glaciers melt and they are the ones who supply water to all the mountain communities. But glaciers also, glaciers are also melting quite fast now. So there'll be a period in near future where glaciers will provide a lot more water in summer because they're melting at a much faster rate. But they're not forming at an equal pace because the temperature is too high. This means in some years, the glaciers will disappear, so this is a big problem for people living in the mountains who are dependent on. Glaciers for water supply and that is also changing now, which means these people in the mountains will have to prepare. To depend on some other water sources, but living in the mountains means it's a harsh life, so that is a big challenge for them. They can't have like piped water supply or reservoirs like we do in the plains. So this is going to be a big problem that has to be tackled in future as well. And the fourth impact is, you know, it's climate change is going to impact everything else. It's, it's not a single issue that, you know, it's just warming temperature, it's not that, it's going to affect all our, all aspects of our society. Even the seasons are shifting, so there's no winter anymore. It's, it's very mild and winters are essential for building up ice sheets and glaciers. That's when these ice sheets and glaciers grow, but now we don't have winter, which is why the ice melt is unstoppable. Crop failures because we can't have too much hot heat, we can't have drought, we can't have too much water. And if we don't have enough food production, then it's going to be a big problem for our society. And lot of pets, so last year we saw this unprecedented locust plague. And that was partly driven by the wet season, extended wet season and that extended wet season was because of increased ocean heat. Which is why there was continuous cyclones and rainfall during the wet season, these locusts thrive and they usually have like a small reproductive. Season, but because it was wet all year long, they just kept on reproducing exponentially and that is how we had this pest. And increased warming is set to favor more pests in future, which means again, our food production is at, you know, risk already. And then we have water stress. Like I said, if the water is not seeping into underground and our underground stores are not being recharged. Then we have a problem because we need a lot of water and. If they're not being recharged accordingly, then we'll just run out of water very quickly. And then desertification, which is areas become too hot for agriculture anymore. So we have small areas of arid lands like that, but now with increased heat, we are set to see a lot more areas being. Desertified in future. So these are the, you know, main impacts of global warming and climate change. So I'm sure all of you must be very concerned by now. So are you, I'm sure you must be wondering who's doing what to solve climate change then? So this is a little bit complex because it's a very complex problem, it is not. In control of one individual or one country to do anything about it. This is a global problem created by many countries over many decades. So it's not like you can just flip a switch and suddenly the warming has stopped. This needs, you know, global cooperation and global changes. So for this, United Nations started facilitating negotiations in nineteen ninety. So that, you know, the whole world will come together, agree that this is a problem and do something about it. Unfortunately, they have not been able to do much since then because negotiations always were. It's, it's a global negotiation, I mean, can you imagine if you have to go to a movie with your friends? Or go to some restaurant with your friends, how long does it take for you guys to like, you know, agree on one place to go? Oh. And this problem is where all countries have to agree to have drastic changes in the way they operate. Do you think it's going to be easy to get to consensus? And that's what has happened for the past thirty years, even though people, even though global leaders knew that this problem is going to be a problem in future in nineteen ninety. Climate action has been very slow. But I'll just give you a brief overview of how this entire, you know. Global negotiations works. So United Nations started facilitating these global negotiations and there was this IPCC that was also established, which was, which is Intergovernmental Panel for Climate Change. On climate change and what they do is they provide countries and, you know, whoever or the world with scientific information on climate change. And what is the possible response for it? Right? So they will collaborate with all the scientists, they will gather all the data and try to put it in a way that, you know, common people like us can understand it. So they will give the guidelines and then there's something called COP, Conference of Parties. This happens every year and this has been happening since nineteen ninety five and this is also facilitated by United Nations. During this conference of parties is where global leaders meet and negotiate and decide what to do. So whatever happens here is, it's like a global decision, right? And the first COP was organized in nineteen ninety five. Finally, twenty years later, in twenty fifteen, the world finally agreed that climate change is a really big problem and we have to do something about it. And that's when Paris Agreement was signed, it's called the Paris Agreement. Because this accord was signed, this conference of party happened in Paris in twenty fifteen. So finally, all these leaders came together and miraculously agreed to limit temperature rise to two degrees by twenty one hundred. And if possible, one point five degrees. So remember, we are at one point two degree warming right now in twenty twenty. By twenty one hundred, we want to limit the warming to one point five degrees, if possible. If not, at least by two degrees and nothing more than two degrees, that is just eight years from now. Right? And what did they, what did they decide in that meeting? They decided that. So they did not decide how to reach one point five degrees by twenty one hundred, but they decided we want to limit to one point five degrees. So immediately IPCC, the, you know, the fact finding report, providing panel. So what they did was they came out with a report to say how we can reach one point five degrees by twenty one hundred. So according to them, first we have to slash our current emissions, emissions as a current carbon emissions by half, by twenty thirty, that is in the next ten years. In the next ten years, our current carbon emissions must be half. And then by twenty fifty. We want. To, there to be no new carbon emissions anymore, which means net zero. So there is no more carbon dioxide from fossil fuels or, or any other greenhouse gases. To be in the atmosphere from, from us, from our side. So there is a natural cycle which will put all of these greenhouse gases in the atmosphere and that is fine, nature will take care of it. But we should not put any extra emissions, so no carbon dioxide, no methane, no nitrous oxide, nothing from our end by twenty fifty. So that's. The goal. And achieve it, but at least if we are looking for whether there's a plan or not, this is the plan. So once they sign the Paris Agreement in twenty fifteen, now, you know, countries are trying to reach that goal, but as of now, we're doing very badly on all fronts. But that is also why we need a lot of public awareness and pressure so that the governments and. corporates will act quickly to actually achieve that goal of, you know, slashing emissions by twenty thirty. So this is a very, you know, I I call it brief, but I'm sure it was a lot more complex. But that's a, you know, good introduction of the entire problem of climate change and not just a scientific problem, but also like the policy and social problems and what are the challenges in actually doing something about it. Right? After that introduction, I want to talk about, get a little bit more into detail. So these are five more things to know about climate change. And the first thing to understand, which I think is clear already, that it's a very complex problem. And before we solve any complex problem, it's very important that we first understand the problem and the underlying causes. Because if we don't understand the root cause of it, we can't eliminate it, right? So which is why it requires a lot of understanding and also not just of the causes, but also the systems which are perpetuating and continuing this, you know, crisis. Which is why it is important to realize it's, we need systems change to solve climate change. We can't just change a little bit of our individual behavior here and there and expect the problem to go away. It's it's a very complex problem. It's gonna be with us for the next, you know, all all our lives. So it's it's important that we realize how complex this is and what is needed to be done. Uh and during one of my sessions on Instagram, I just asked people, what do you think will avoid the climate crisis? So as you can see, the responses here, some people said I'll grow my own food, someone said restore natural ecosystem, someone said change government officials and put scientists there, someone said transition to hundred percent renewable energy. Someone was saying get into politics. All these answers are more or less relevant. But which is the biggest driver of climate change? Because if we know which is the major, you know, thing that is causing climate change, then we can just go straight to that and, you know, start working on that, right? So let's see, where do all our emissions come from? Here, if you can see, this is the greenhouse gas emissions in twenty sixteen. For the year, this is the breakdown, where did we get most of our carbon dioxide emissions from? As you can see here, seventy two percent is coming from energy. Energy used in industry, energy used in transportation, energy used in buildings. This means all of our electricity, fuel for industries and petrol, diesel, whatever for transportation, so shipping, aviation. And, you know, just commercial and residential energy use, all our air conditioning or cooling solutions are having in electricity all the time, all these things. All of that comes under energy. So energy is the major contributor. This is where all our emissions are coming from. And there's some from agriculture, forestry and land use. What this means is how we are using the land. So all of the deforestation or crop burning and how much land we are, you know, using for agriculture. So agricultural emissions are also there, right? Which is, which also causes methane and carbon dioxide and all that. So agriculture and forestry and everything, you can see, it's just eighteen point four percent. But energy is the major contributor, which means it's quite obvious, right? This is where we first need to start working on. Because there's no point that we reduce a little bit of agricultural and forestry and land use emissions. We still have seventy percent left. And we have to reduce our emissions by half, by twenty thirty, which means this kind of small increments will not work. We need to work on major transformations. Which is why it is very important to understand that climate change is an energy issue. Unless we transform how we get our energy, we should stop burning coal, we should stop burning oil, we should stop burning natural gas. Unless we stop all of these things, we will not be able to stop climate change. And for that, renewables are the answer. Before ten years ago, it was not probably technologically as advanced. But today we have solar, wind and oceans. And we have a lot of options to actually get a lot of renewable energy. So today we have some solutions. So this is the first thing that, you know, uh we need to work on for climate change. So the biggest impact would be if we completely transform our energy system to run on renewables and not on fossil fuels anymore. However, it's also very important to remember that climate change is also an inequality issue. Right? The rich countries and rich people contribute disproportionately high to climate change. And the poor countries and poor people suffer disproportionately high climate impacts instead. Here, if you can see, we know that we have put a lot of carbon dioxide emissions in the atmosphere. But who is responsible for so much of carbon dioxide, you know, emissions? As you can see here, America leads the charge. So they are responsible for about twenty five percent of all carbon dioxide emissions in the atmosphere. Next comes China. And if you see, India is somewhere here. So not all, all countries are equal in, you know, causing the climate crisis. Actually, according to one study, Global North, that is a handful of developed countries and EU, these developed countries are USA, Japan, Russia, and you know, a couple of countries. Only these few developed, rich and developed countries together, they have contributed ninety two percent of excess warming. And the global south, which is majority of the developing world, including India, Africa, you know, many other low income countries in Asia and South America. All these together only contributed eight percent to global warming. But who is facing the impacts the most? The south suffers more than ninety percent of the climate breakdown and ninety eight percent deaths associated with climate change. So first, we don't have enough money. We are trying to develop still. And we did not cause the problem, but we're already facing the major impacts, which was, you know, of an issue that was not even created by us. Which means, you know, people have to take responsibility accordingly, right? In solving the problem and also in assisting the people who are facing the problem. All these things are also kind of incorporated in the Paris Agreement. And it's not just about rich countries and poor countries. It is also about rich people and poor people. As you can see here, the richest one percent, they're responsible for as much emissions as the fifty percent of the poorest of the world. And the richest ten percent together, they have as much emissions as the rest of the world. So ninety percent of the world have as much, you know, carbon emissions as ten percent of the richest. So our atmospheric and natural resources are a common pool for all countries and people to share equally. All of us have, you know, equal access. Or theoretically, we all have equal access to all resources and the atmosphere. But resources are not limited. Sorry, resources are limited. And also the amount of carbon dioxide that we can put in the atmosphere is also limited. Which means everyone has to share fairly. But when this fair sharing does not happen, we, you know, have situations like this. Right? So it's it's very clear that higher the income, higher the carbon footprint, whether it is individuals or countries. And prosperity is the primary driver of carbon emissions. It correlates with higher consumption and, you know, by association, higher emissions. Which means people who are consuming disproportionately high or countries who are consuming a lot will have to also bring down their emissions so that the rest of the world can develop and achieve some kind of, you know, uh standard of living because a lot of world is still living in poverty. And for all of us to come up, people who are at the top, they need to, you know, change their ways so that their ways are not so destructive to the entire planet. Okay, so now we talk about what needs to be done. How can we solve this problem? Do we have any solutions for this? So one is we need global cooperation and we need major changes across all systems in the society. And there are three parts to, you know, what what needs to be known. The first one is mitigation. Mitigation is just like a fancy name for emission reduction. What it means is our carbon dioxide and greenhouse gas emissions have to come down, right? They have to go down by half by twenty thirty and they have to go to net zero by twenty fifty. So this is one third of the plan, adaptation, which is preparing for impacts. Because the world is already warmed by one point two degrees. You're already seeing a lot of these extreme heat and flooding and cyclones and pests and all these impacts. Which means we have to also prepare for it. We can't just live how we used to live before. Because we'll be faced with all of these new challenges and we'll have to prepare for it entirely. Or sea level rise or like lack of water, how how are we going to live with that? So that is adaptation. And the third part of it is sustainable living solutions. So once we get to net zero, we should be able to still have a decent quality of life. It's not that, you know, we just say like, okay, nobody do anything, go back to living off the land and don't have any comforts. Live in like some hearts or something like that, not like that. We still want everyone to live have a good life, a decent life, which is not extracting too much resources from the atmosphere and also from the ecosystem. So for that, we need to figure out sustainable living solutions. So that also has to parallelly work along with mitigation and adaptation so that, you know, we still have like a good way to live. And nature plays a very important role in both mitigation and adaptation. So nature can not only take carbon dioxide out of the atmosphere, but it'll also help us, you know, it'll also protect us from all of these impacts. So if we have a lot of forests, if we have a lot of mangroves, if we have a lot of wetlands, they will, you know, help with everything else. They'll help with storms when they are, and when there's a lot of rainfall, they will help with underground water recharge. And we still need like, you know, thriving functional ecosystem because where are we going to grow our crops from? And where will we get our produce from? We still need nature to be a part of this. So it's very important that we conserve nature. And this means, in context of India, for us, this means all development projects need to have a very thorough environmental impact assessment before being greenlit. Because we have clearly seen that we cannot put economy above environment anymore. Because if we don't have a stable environment, then we don't have any economy. We saw how pandemic has crippled the entire economy. So what's the use of all of this money? When we can't live a normal life, you know, it's been a year and still we haven't gotten back to like living a normal life. So we have to like, give monetary value to environment. We can't just think like it is, yeah, it's just something in the background. Environment is very important for us to have a stable and secure life in future. So after, you know, listening to all these things, everything seems so complex and so high level and so far out of reach for an individual. So you must be wondering, what can, you know, you as an individual do to help them? So this, this is going, the solution is going to sound a little bit counterintuitive, but this is, this is what will help the most. The most effective and impactful thing an individual can do to fight climate crisis is to learn about the crisis and educate themselves and talk about it nonstop. When I say this is a little bit counterintuitive, so how will, you know, just talking about climate change help? Right? But that's the thing. The solution to climate change are varied. And it depends on one's geographical location, political landscape, elected leaders, civil society engagement. And, you know, what are your individual skills and resources? So it's very difficult to say like, okay, if you do this, it's going to solve the problem. And since there's no silver bullet or like one task list saying, okay, do this, 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 and you know, climate change will stop. We can't say anything like that. So it falls upon individuals and communities to find solutions that work best for them. Like let's say in case of Mumbai or Bangalore, if you protected some wetland or if you stop the mangroves from being chopped off, that's a great help. Because that will protect you from like, you know, future storm events or it'll help with groundwater recharge. But I can't say the same thing for someone in Nepal, right? Because they don't have the same problems. So which is why it is very important to understand the problem thoroughly and what is causing the issues. And then, you know, you can figure out based on your skills and your community and you can all come together to solve a problem that is, you know, specific to your region and where you can actually help. What if your uh strength is in campaigning, then you can be a very good, you know, campaigner for some political party which is coming up with green laws. Or maybe there's a very good political candidate who has a lot of good ideas and can also like, you know, who's capable to run an office, then, you know, you can help them with campaigning. What if your skills are in agriculture? We need our agriculture also to be sustainable. And we need our agriculture to, you know, adapt to the impacts of climate change in future. So then if you understand what is going to happen, then you'll employ your skills and your capacity and resources in finding a solution to that. What if you are a good engineer, then you'll be able to transform the, you know, maybe the local electricity grid sector. So it depends. It's very hard to say what is the most impactful thing. But when you talk about this thing with your friends, with the community, that's when, you know, you will be able to identify uh, you know, where your skills and time and resources can be invested to get the best climate action. Right? And I think that was a very long. We're almost out of time, but I'm happy to ask any questions or anything if you want to discuss now.
Hello ma'am.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. I'm Amit from Energy and Event Batch. Ma'am, I have a question. In two thousand nineteen, we have seen that the Alpha Line was there in the Euro where the warming was taking place.
Okay.
The heating was taking place. But in two thousand twenty, when pandemic happened, so everything became standstill. But even though we have seen that Estonia and Lithuania, these countries, the temperature have for them, the temperature rise around plus three degrees Celsius and more than that. So what are the reasons associated with it? Even though nothing was taking place, so even though the temperature has gone up for them very high.
So when you say nothing was taking place, you mean the pandemic lockdown?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so that's the thing, right? So carbon dioxide stays in the atmosphere for like hundreds of years. So this warming that we are seeing now is not because of this year's carbon dioxide emissions. We already have put so much extra carbon dioxide in the atmosphere and this has been going on since eighteen hundreds, right? So all of that carbon dioxide is still there in the atmosphere because we have no way of either naturally or artificially taking out that carbon dioxide from the atmosphere. Which means it is still there and that is what is causing the warming. So as long as there is carbon dioxide in the atmosphere, it doesn't matter if there's a very small dip today. So in twenty twenty, because of the pandemic, the dip was only seven percent. So imagine when the whole world was, you know, not doing anything and stood still for a whole year, the dip was still just seven percent. So this shows the importance of, you know, systems change and not like this kind of small changes where people have stopped flying or transportation has stopped for a brief time. So this is why it is a very big challenge. Where we have to change the entire systems, how it works. Because even when the whole world stopped, the systems were still running in the background. And because of that, we only had a very minute seven percent dip in emissions in twenty twenty. And because carbon dioxide stays in the atmosphere for a very long time, it didn't matter. This warming will probably, this dip will probably reflect sometime later, but then by that time, we'll also increase the carbon dioxide emissions. So we'll probably never see any impact of this dip except for like some, you know, point zero one percent or point zero zero one percent reduction in temperature. Does that answer your question?
Yes, ma'am. Also adding to that question, ma'am. If if the dip is around seven percent, so do you think when the economic growth will rise? As the economic, the survey which I released recently, the government is saying that India is looking for a V shape recovery and the recovery will be around, the GDP growth will be around the fifteen percent. So it is very much high. So do you think when the economic growth will rise, so the situation will be more drastic?
Uh you mean, will the emissions go back higher?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, definitely. So economy and emissions are like very closely correlated. Because like I said, prosperity is the primary driver of emissions. So as countries or people get more rich or prosper more and come out of poverty, their emissions rise by a lot, which is why rich people have the highest carbon, individual carbon footprint, rich countries have the highest country emissions. So yeah, when the, if the economy goes back up again and obviously the economy will go up in, you know, the coming years. So yeah, the emissions will also go up in relation to that, which is why it's important that, you know, we just wean off completely of fossil fuels. Because in that case, there is a little bit of disconnect between economic growth and emissions. But as long as the economy is still powered by fossil fuels, the entire market runs with fossil fuels, yeah, that's a very clear direct correlation. As the economy grows, the emissions will also grow.
Ma'am, also, as we have seen, yeah, even though we are able to achieve the national goals, that then also the temperature rise will take place around three point three degree rise. So also, it has me said that if the ice, the Arctic, the ice sheets in the Arctic are in the irreversible process now. So the melting is irreversible. So the melting is irreversible, even if we are able to achieve the one point five degrees Celsius rise. So what could be more done in order to mitigate or adapt to these impacts?
Both are equally important, both are equally important, because yeah, like you said, there are a lot of effects, impacts that have, the processes have already started. And probably they are irreversible, which means we will have to adapt to sea level rise, we will have to adapt to extreme heat. And we will have to adapt to extreme flooding and India, what India can do is instead of again pursuing more fossil fuel powered growth. Because yeah, technically, if you, you know, talk about it, logically speaking, yeah, we are allowed to have a lot more carbon budget. Because we did not cause this problem and as of now, our development directly correlates with how much energy we have. Because prosperity only comes with energy access. So we want to lift all of our people out of poverty. But pursuing that growth in future, especially when we know that things are getting, going to get so bad is kind of. I would say not the best path, because even though morally it is, you know, yeah, we could emit more emissions. Thinking of our own people, I think it would be better so that we don't blindly go forward with fossil fuel powered emissions. And also invest a lot more in renewable energy and also provide energy access to all these people. And then India must invest a lot in adapting to the changes, because we don't have just one problem. We have everything from heat to glacier melt, to sea level rise, to flooding, to droughts. We have got all the issues of climate change, because we have a very varied landscape, everything from Himalayas to like the hot plains of South India. We have everything, which means for us, adaptation is going to be the most important. And also, yeah, India is like one of the most vulnerable countries. So in every year, the surveys, we are like the fifth most vulnerable, seventh most vulnerable. So we, we got like the complete package. We are going to be very much battered by climate change, which means adaptation must be like a top priority for the government. And you know, for all of us.
Okay ma'am, ma'am, I have just last question.
You can just, it's related or if it's different, we'll just take some few questions and then come back to you. Okay Amit?
Sure ma'am, sure ma'am.
Yeah, we will answer your question too. Yeah, so Pooja is asking something she has asked in the chat box.
Right, I'm just saying that.
Right, so renewable energy by default does not mean it's the, you know, it's green energy and it's like the best way to do it. So what you've said is, okay, let me just read, I read it out. So renewable infrastructure like for solar panels are a major destructor of biodiversity is what, what Pooja Rathor is asking. So which is, which is very true. So we can't just automatically assume that, you know, if we have a solar or a wind farm. Then by default, it's, it's all green. There is a lot of problems there as well, which is why a lot of, you know, thought must be gone. Must, must go into any of these new projects. So right now, we are just expanding aggressively. We're just building these huge solar parts, just so we are able to say like, oh, India is, you know, improving its renewable energy capacity. And show the world that we are a climate leader of sorts. But that's a very valid point that, you know, everything by default will not become green. There are a lot of these issues, very valid issues where biodiversity is affected. And also like the local people are being affected, because you can't just say like for the benefit of the whole world, you guys just move away from this land. And we will take away your land and, you know, we'll just put a huge solar farm or we'll put a wind farm that is affecting wildlife around your areas. So that needs to be definitely, you know, something that has to be kept in mind. Which is why again, environmental impact assessments become so important. And regarding solar and wind energy use, after thirty years of trying, that we only have two percent of total global energy after thirty years of trying. Yeah, the process has been very slow for sure, but in the last few years, things have developed by a lot. So usually what happens is when regulations come, the market responds very quickly, which is why people have been pushing government to enforce policies. So once you say like, you cannot do this anymore, you cannot invest in coal anymore, you cannot invest in oil and gas anymore. The market responds very quickly in terms of innovation and adoption. And in the last few years, because I think a lot of corporates have also been realizing that the future is in renewables. There have been a lot of technological advancements, because of which solar and all renewable energy production and battery storage. You know, and the cost for production, all of it has like improved by a lot. So it is not, yeah, as, you know, it's not as encouraging as we want in the last thirty years. But right now, it looks okay. We have some hope for positive outcome in the next couple of years. So Pooja, hope that answers your question.
Yes ma'am, thank you ma'am.
So Aditi is saying how to find or join such people, such means?
Hello ma'am, I'm Aditi. So can I just elaborate my question?
Sure.
Yes. Yeah, so I'm a student of B L L B first year. So ma'am, since the very beginning, I've been into this field of climate change and everything. I also went for a campaigning, as you said, like talk about it as much as you can. So we literally had a campaign of Baljanagara, where we were told to talk about climate change to the normal people, like the localites who are there. And to the slum dwellers or anything, like whoever we could teach. So we went to it. So like you said right now, he joins such people, join the politicians or those people who are into this campaigning. So we as students, how do we find such people? Like since, like given my example, I am very much interested into campaigning for climate change or anything. So how do I go about it?
On this. Like you, sorry, I didn't get that. Are you a law student?
Yes ma'am, I'm a law student.
Are you interested in pursuing law?
Yes ma'am.
So there's your answer. If you're already a law student, then a lot of these battles will have to be fought in court now.
Right, right.
Even with the EIA, if the, with the whole environmental impact assessment that was happening in India during the lockdown. A lot of these things were again fought in court, right? They were asking for, you know, translations, they were asking for more explanations. So a lot of these battles will be fought in courts now, because once you set a precedent, that's when again, you know, things change. So you, if you're already interested in law and you're also interested in climate change, and this is how you, you know, find. Areas where you can, you know, contribute. It's, it's one like me, because I'm already a journalist, for me, communication was like the natural next step.
Yes ma'am.
So this is what people have to do. It's, it's, it's not like everyone has to do one thing, but you know, you have to identify what it is that you're good at, what it is that you want to do. And how can you help climate change? So if you look at any of these environmental issues, there, there are so many battles fought in court right now. There are so many young people who have, you know, sued corporates, who have sued governments. There are local communities who are again fighting for the same battles in courts. So that would be definitely one area that you can look at. And there are a lot of these collectives that have formed on Twitter or, you know, you can see NGOs that are filing these kind of cases.
Yes ma'am.
That could be one way to, you know, look at people who are working in the same field. Or you could also just get together with your friends and, you know, just think like where is the best. You know, outcome or return for your rewards, like what can you do with your available skills and resources? So that, that is why I was saying it's, it's very important to talk about it, because as you talk about it, you also find your community. And you know, once you find your community, then it's very easy to do some collective work. Because individually, it's, it's very difficult to accomplish something in this field. And I think it's very important for us to realize that we all, all need to be part of a larger community to do impactful work. So which is why talking is like one way to get started with it, where you know, you identify common interests and you identify your skills and how you can all pull together your. You know, skills and resources to do something about it.
Got it ma'am, thank you, thank you so much.
So even Aditi, I would like to add what Nilima said. In the starting, I mentioned that biodiversity cell of our university itself is just two years old. And further, I really want to expand it with students on the committee. We don't have a single student on biodiversity cell committee, just a club where you interact or you come for some documentation, that's it. So right now, students' participation is very minimal in our biodiversity cell. So there, there I want to expand where the committees will have a strong footing, where you will be working for our own campus. For your own campus, as Nilima said, that we have to start with our own campus, our own community, our own town. To, you know, battle with the climate change at the larger sector. So I really want students from law, from design, from engineering, from, you know, journalism, it's media, business. On the platform as a community's, our biodiversity cell members. So yes, Aditi, you please come and visit our campus.
Ma'am, I'm already, ma'am, I'm already a part of the biodiversity cell. I applied, I gave my name for that.
Okay, so I'll see you in person once.
Sure ma'am, definitely.
The campus is open and we have to do lot more than just meeting on Sunday special sessions.
Yes ma'am, sure ma'am.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Please come up with questions if you have any S I I B students, you can also ask questions.
Ma'am, I just had one question that what can an individual youth like Greta Thunberg do? If there is no political will among the powerful politicians and also the industrialists?
Yeah, again, if you see what Greta did, it, it was just talk about it. She understood the problem and she was also a very good communicator. So she was able to distill all of this complex jargon and all of these ridiculous numbers into very easy, understandable. Snippets that even common people could understand. And you know, she mobilized a whole movement. So this movement is the kind where, you know, it's, that's why I said it's very important to realize that nobody can do anything as an individual here. It is a complete collective effort, because we need collective systems change and for that, one person cannot do anything. So we just need to get as many people with as many skills. I mean, she didn't know that she's going to become this global icon when she sat in front of that parliament saying, you know, I'm doing a climate strike. You just never know how things work and you know, how different people interact to like, you know, create movements. So nobody expected anything like that, but you know, it's become a whole, this whole school for strike has become such a huge movement everywhere. So and also I think one of the other important things that people don't talk about in terms of any activism or doing any times, a kind of long-term work. Is I think we have to just disconnect, disassociate, seeing the result from doing the work. Right? You can't work expecting to see a change in your lifetime. If, if it happens, it's, it's very good, but if we keep expecting results, then I think it's, it's especially for problems like this. Or any of the social issues, you can't see anything happen in like, you know, your lifetime. And all of these small, small changes just add up. Today, someone protested, tomorrow, two people protested. You know, a month later, someone, you know, filed a legislation. A year later, someone ran for the office. So these are like very small, you know, very long processes. Where small activities add to the longer thing. So it's very important that, you know, we just remember that this is what we have to do and do whatever is within your capacity. It's not like you have to, you know, be like Greta. No, it's not necessary. Just do whatever you can within your capacity, be concerned. And, you know, work with all you've got and not expect results immediately. And then you never know how things will, you know, come together and what happens and what opportunities come together. So yeah, I would say, yeah, that's, that's the most important thing. So, you know, do whatever you can, but just don't expect something to happen that you can see visibly. And once you disassociate that expectation of a result from the responsibility of just doing something, it's, I think that's how movements build.
Thank you ma'am.
Ma'am, I also had a query, as one of, in one of your articles, you have mentioned. That you are, we have to switch to renewable energy sources. And in transport sector, we are looking forward to the electrical vehicles. That's very much into the talk and would be coming soon to India also. So don't you think introduction of electrical vehicles would also add up to the EVs generation, which is already an issue at present?
Right, so again, climate change, like I said, it's not a single issue, right? It also, you know, types into the whole, the way the whole society functions. So one way of looking at removing fossil fuel powered vehicles from the, you know, transportation sector is replacing them with electric vehicles. But like you said, that is again going to create another problem for us. Instead, what if we think about, you know, creating better public transportation? Where people don't need to have electric vehicles, like private vehicles, right? So again, for all of this, you need like interdisciplinary studies and research. But you definitely, electric vehicles are definitely better than fossil fuel powered vehicles. But the best thing would be to have, you know, urban areas and cities planned in a way so that you can either walk or take public transportation. Where, you know, large number of people can be transported, transported at once. So yeah, definitely that's an issue. And just because again, it's electric vehicle, it does not automatically mean like that is the best solution that we have. Definitely not. That's a good point.
Thank you ma'am.
Anyone has any other questions?
Oh ma'am, I had a doubt. I had a question basically, like every time, whenever there are calamity takes place, we all blame for the climate change, basically which is true. The one thing that comes into my head is like, is it too late to prevent that climate change right now? Like are we drowning completely? Are we on the head of it? What is that exactly?
Okay, so. Let's say someone is slapping you non-stop. Would it be better if they completely stop slapping you or would it be better if the number of slaps are reduced? Or is like, is there a preference?
So obviously, they should stop it.
But if they can't stop it, what is the next?
They should reduce it, they should reduce it.
Same thing with climate change. So climate change is slapping us non-stop. So if we don't, you know, do anything about it, one thing is, yeah, the slaps are never stopping. So that's what we have to, you know, just understand. And the other thing is, as long as the slaps are not increasing, let's say someone is slapping you ten times a minute. It's definitely getting slapped twenty times a minute is, you know, worse than getting slapped ten times a minute. So there is no threshold as such, so we can't say like, oh, it's, it's all, it's all done, because things are going to continue to get worse. So if you don't want things to get worse, then we have to just keep on acting like, yeah, it may not go back to what it was before. Because I think we've probably crossed that point already, unless there is some new technological advancement. But our goal currently must be to, you know, just reduce the impacts and adapt to the impacts. And it's not true that the flooding or drowning, all of these impacts that we are seeing, it's not true that it's entirely because of climate change. Climate change is a, you know, partly responsible for it. There are other parts that we are not adapting to it. If you see our urban areas, there is no way for the water to go, which is why when we are getting this, all of this, you know, ridiculous amounts of rainfall in a single. Day or in a single hour, we don't have any drainage system to, you know, tackle that kind of flooding. We don't have enough open area where the water can seep into the underground. We don't have rivers where, which are like, you know, not blocked by dams or like not blocked by garbage, so that the water can flow out. So it's not just a problem of, you know, climate change, it's also a problem of managing the impact, right? We just never thought of these things and now we are facing the issues. So let's say, fine, we cannot stop it, stop the temperature from, you know, going about one point five degrees. But we are still living here, right? So we are not going to like, and it's not, climate change is not going to be something like, if we cross one point five degrees temperature. And everything suddenly just burns and we are all just dead. It's not going to happen. We will still have to live with the impacts of one point five degrees. Or two degrees or whatever is the warming. So yeah, we possibly can't go back to the kind of life that we had before. But if we don't do anything, then it will just, yeah, we will just get more slaps. So I think the aim should be just to reduce the number of slaps. Yes ma'am, thank you so much. Amit, you can ask your question.
Actually, my question is answered now. Actually, I was about to ask the same question. That in one side, we are talking about the EVs, but the electricity that then, that will be used to charge our EVs will be from the fossil fuel itself. Because in India, seventy percent, the eighty percent or in the world, eighty percent, the electricity comes from the, these plants which uses the coal. So I was about to ask the same question, that what else need to be done in order to mitigate that?
Mainly a lot of urban planning, so that people don't have to take vehicles, because that is like some kind of old colonial capitalistic hangover. Where we feel like if we have a car or something, it shows some kind of a status. But again, because land is limited, we can't expect that everyone to have a car, because where are we going to put all of these cars now? Which means we are not only have to change what society values, like, you know, your, you know, what do you call, what you appreciate or what you think is like a show of status. We also have to change how people get from point A to point B. So yeah, I mean, if somebody, maybe I hope we see a future where if we see someone in a car, then you look down upon them and not look up to them because the culture also, you know, propagates what kind of desires people have. So that societal shift also has to come there, you know, where you don't feel insulted or embarrassed to take the public transportation. So that cultural shift also has to come and also design wise. And you can't make people give up stuff. Like I, I still have to take taxis even though I'm doing all of this work. Just because I am into climate activism doesn't mean like I'm going to walk everywhere. Because if if the solutions are asking you to give up stuff, then it will never work. Because maybe sometimes it'll work, but if you have an emergency or running out of time, you have to earn your living, you'll not think about all of these things. So which is why solutions always have to like, you know, be in a way that people are not inconvenienced, like changing your behavioral patterns is one thing. But inconveniencing people is another thing. You can't ask people to walk in, you know, forty degree humid Mumbai heat from one place to another place. So you can't ask them. So then maybe, I don't know, put up pathways where there are all these trees, where people can walk under them, where it is cooler. And then, you know, get to like a public metro shed or, you know, like some kind of tram or whatever. So these are the kind of designs that will have to be developed in future where, you know, people are not inconvenienced and they are living a local life.
Ma'am, regarding that cultural shift and the human behavior, ma'am, I have an open ended question for that. When we talk about, as we talk about, like in two thousand thirty, we have to cut the emissions by half. By two thousand fifty, we have to cut the emission by full. So but when we have seen that China recently has announced that they will cut their CO2 emission, not the other methane and others, but only the CO2 emission by two thousand sixty. But India is yet to announce some numbers on that. So what are the factors that that is still, we are behind that, ma'am?
Ah, interesting. Yeah, that's definitely something that's been bothering you know, a lot of us in India as well. I think it's important that we must have emission reduction targets. And so far, so there are two aspects to it. In the beginning, when the negotiations were happening, the Western world was insinuating that India is not a climate leader or, you know, it's not even like onboard this whole problem of climate change and that they are going to be a big problem in future. Right? Which was bad. You can't, because we didn't create the problem, you can't automatically come to us and say like you develop in a green and sustainable way when the rest of us have developed using fossil fuels, but we don't have the technology, we don't have the financing and we didn't even create the problem. And we have so many people still living in poverty. So you can't come to, you know, Indian leaders and say like, hello, you solve your, you solve the problem that we created. Which was wrong, which is why India has been pushing back for the longest time in taking, you know, hard targets because we don't have to do it morally speaking. And also, you know, if you just top numbers, we didn't create it. So it it was quite valid for the leaders in the past to say that. But now we have advanced technologically enough. And we've also seen the impacts as a country that is very vulnerable to climate impacts. I think our leaders need to be more, not leaders, the people, the, you know, people who are like recommending to the leaders basically and who go for these negotiations. I think they'll have to be more, you know, proactive and have a more, a little bit more of forethought. Instead of, you know, saying the same old things which were true ten years ago, but not anymore. So now we have no excuse for saying we'll not have any targets. We need to have targets. So I think maybe public pressure, more people talking about it and you know, that's what I think the civil society engagement is also necessary to just show that people understand the problems and they're, you know, they're they are holding the government responsible for climate impacts. Maybe that's when we'll see a some kind of a shift. But at least with China announcing their targets, I think that's a big signal that even the develops of China and India were the two major problems, right, in the developing world, whose emissions were poised to be quite high after the Western world. So now that China has announced their emissions, I think emission cuts, I think India will also face some kind of pressure, which I think all of us together must, you know, also boost the, what do you call, perception that we want targets as well. We want emission reduction targets as well.
Thank you, ma'am.
So it's going very interestingly and we have many, many questions. I think we'll take few more questions for last five minutes and then we can end it. But definitely, your questions, you can send it to me on my email ID and I'll get it answered by Nilima. You can directly ask her on her Instagram or Facebook, you will get. So please come up with your questions, any other students if you have.
No questions?
Okay. Okay, so I think Nilima, this is our longest session till now. And
I would like to get some feedback. How was the session? Was it too high level? Was it too complicated? The way it would help because like I said, I've never spoken about it to a live audience before. So I would want to know how was it? Was it easy to follow or was it complex so that I can, you know, refine it for future?
I'm actually, I think it was easy to follow and we actually, we actually studied our whole one semester in this room when it happened.
That's great to know. Thank you. But I also think depending on the questions that you asked, you are already quite aware of the, you know, aspects of climate change. I would want to hear from someone who is like probably not as, you know, knowledgeable.
Ma'am, I have few more questions, but I will ask them through my email.
Yeah, sure, sure. You can ask me on Instagram. I'll get back to you on that. So I would like to hear from someone who is not really knowledgeable on climate change, on how they felt the session was. Anything is fine. I'm I'm, I just want honest feedback so that I can improve my, you know, presentation the next time.
Well, no.
That is great.
I think he is from photography institute, R U G student, the youngest one must be. So I think how was it?
I mean, it's great.
It was great.
And knowledgeable too.
Was it easy to follow?
Yes, ma'am.
Concepts and all the graphs and scientific stuff?
Especially the infographics, ma'am. So it helped us.
Okay.
All the maps and all that, the infographics were especially useful for us.
Okay, great. Look, I'm very happy to hear that because I was a little bit worried that I had, I had so many other talking points and I was, the session had already extended so much. So I was thinking maybe it was not clear, but I am glad to hear that it was easy to follow.
Yeah, no, your session did not extend much. It was quite to the point. And you really took it really nicely, means the graphs also and whatever you wanted to project with that. It's for me also, it was, means all, all of that is in depth and really nice to know. Fantastic.
Great. Glad to hear that. Yeah, all right then. That's it, I suppose.
Yeah.
For inviting me for this session. And yeah, happy to do another session sometime, but with more interactive questions because like I said, this is, this is what is most helpful where, you know, we interact with people who already have like a certain level of understanding, then based on that questions, I think it's easier to, you know, develop the information further. So maybe we could do one sometime if people have questions that they just want to discuss. I am happy to do that. Like I really don't enjoy presentations, but interactions definitely interested.
Yeah, it means I always end our session that till now, all the, you know, experts who came and interacted with students, I always propose that we should have a second or third session over the period where we can go one step ahead. So yes, Nilima, definitely, whatever we have learned today and understood, we will take it ahead a step by step where you can explore with us and the knowledge you have gathered till now. And
the presentation here so that if someone wants to just read it.
Yeah. And there are students from Symbasis Institute of International Business who have these particular subjects, renewable energy and environment science. They have these sort of like Amit and Purva and Rishali and Ganesh. So students, you can, you know, propose that we can have Nilima, you know, interacting with only your batch also, where you can give me the subjects you want to explore further with Nilima and we can have that separate session for you also. So you can talk to your batchmates or Dr. Prakash Rao and any other faculty and we can have a special session for you too.
Sure, ma'am.
Okay, then, no, ma'am, we would love that. Fantastic. Thanks, Nilima. I'm not a subject matter expert on individual like renewable energy or anything like that, but a high level overview and, you know, more on the social and communication aspects of it. Definitely happy to, you know, talk to you guys about it. Can't talk to you in particular about renewable energy sector or like how solar is doing in India because that is not my expertise, but yeah, definitely open to having these conversations to just, you know, explore ideas further.
Even Purva, Rishali, what you can do, you can talk to your batchmates and get the questions are what exactly they want to know. And then we can, you know, that way we can get to students' expectations of what kind of subject they want to know or what kind of information they want to know from Nilima, not particulars. Okay, then we can go to the end.
Yes, ma'am.
So we would like to thank you, Nilima, officially.
Thank you, ma'am. It was indeed a privilege to have you among us today. And on the behalf of biodiversity club of S I U, I would like to thank you for taking time out of your busy schedule and giving us a deeper knowledge about climate change. I would also like to thank the students for being a part of this session and Shilpa ma'am for organizing this for us. I hope this lecture will be a great help to all of you in the coming future. Once again, we thank you, ma'am, and we look forward for further interaction with you in the future. Thank you, everyone. Hope you have a good day ahead. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone, for taking this session. Okay, bye bye, Nilima. Thanks. So the team, you can stay back. Have you taken few photos?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, I did.
Okay, good. So
Am I think I was left? Can you take mine?
Okay. So those who are here, please you can open your videos and Dr. Sharon.
Okay, I'm going to take the picture. If anyone else wanna switch on the camera, they can do. Cheers.
And anyone from outside of Symbasis who are not Symbasis students and have joined knowing from Instagram or any other sources, is there anyone?
Ma'am, one of my friend joined. I think she left now.
Oh.
She had joined the session, yeah.
Okay, so see you next Sunday with again another new subject. And climate change was really a different subject and I got Nilima, who is not hardcore scientist in climate change, but I'm sure that you all must have, you know, enjoyed her session. And did you?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Good, good. Chalo. Then as